For the council meeting of Wednesday, May 16th at 7:30 PM. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes and bills, minutes from the meeting of May 2nd, 2018, and bills for payment. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Mr. Murzky has a couple of presentations he would like to make.
First, we'd like to call up to the stage Carter Starachi. Today, we're honoring Carter Starachi for his accomplishments in the field of high school wrestling. He was the PI AA champion in the 160-pound class for AAA wrestling championships held at the Giant Center in Hershey, Pennsylvania. And this is a very significant accomplishment. There aren't that many state champions from Pennsylvania in wrestling. And I believe you're an underclassman, only sophomore, junior?
Junior.
Junior in high school, so he's got another year to go. So we wanted to honor him on behalf of the city for his accomplishments. You know, wrestling is one of those sports where it's just you and your opponent. And it takes physical discipline, endurance, mental discipline. And those qualities will serve you well, not just on the mat, but in life. And so we wanted to honor you on behalf of City Council. Whereas the City Council of the City of Erie wishes to pay tribute to Erie's Carter Starachi as a member of the Cathedral Prep varsity wrestling team. And whereas Carter Starachi won gold with a 6'4" victory in overtime in the 160-pound match at the 2018 PI AA 3A wrestling championships held at the Giant Center in Hershey, PA. And whereas Starachi, a junior, is the first individual state champion for the Cathedral Prep Ramblers in 22 years. And he has completed a perfect season of 46-0, when he defeated his opponent with a sudden victory. Carter was also named the Best of Varsity Cup 2017-2018 All-Star Wrestler of the Year. Therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Erie that this commendation is hereby presented to Carter Starachi upon achieving the goals that he set for himself with hard work, dedication, and determination. Erie City Council extends our best wishes in future wrestling seasons and in the pursuit of academic and professional endeavors. So Carter, congratulations to you. Let's give him a round of applause. Mom, if you want to come up and take your picture. Mom, Beth.
Congratulations. Good job. Very nice job. Congratulations.
At this time, I would like to call up the Collegiate Academy academic team from the Samsung competition. in Samsung's United Nations Global Solve for Tomorrow competition. And this was invitation-only. And how many schools were there? Just a few, right? Eight schools across the country.
Four schools across the country.
Oh, four schools across the country.
And then four international schools were chosen to compete at the United Nations.
Erie's own Northwest Pennsylvania Collegiate Academy was one of only four schools in the country chosen to compete. And we wanted to recognize them on their accomplishments. With us, we have Erin Fleming, one of the team members, and she's going to speak a little bit about their Global Solve for Tomorrow challenge.
My classmates Hannah Heche and Olivia Kelly and I were lucky enough to be able to travel to New York City to present to the United Nations about a project and a solution for decent economic work for all. So part of our solutions, we worked with a school from Tunisia, the International School of Tunis, and we were able to tackle two goals. And so they had a different one from us. But we worked together and we presented to the United Nations as a team. And it was a great bonding experience. We've made a lot of new friends from across the country and across the world. So it was a great learning experience and a great experience overall. So, yeah.
These young people are definitely worthy of council's recognition, and so we wanted to honor them today. You can give them a round of applause. Go ahead. As I call your names individually, please come up. And when you get your certificate, you can shake the hands of council and then come back around to the front. And then at the end, we'll take a picture with your administrators. Summer Hannah. Is Summer here?
She had to study.
She had to study. Rachel Zimmer. Priya Rathenvu. I probably butchered that. Priya?
She's studying.
Priya is studying, too. When you're this good, you've got to study a lot, that's why. Cameron McCullum. Studying. Kids are tough. It's AP week. They're taking their advanced placement tests. That's why they're all studying. Julia Holder. Natalia Powell. Christine Kim. Amsala Govindappa. Spencer Heartland. Studying. Kevin Xu. Jack Scribner. Adam Court. Studying. Erin Fleming. Hannah Heche. Olivia Kelly. James Fleming. Mr. Fleming. Come on down, Mr. Fleming. Come on down. Mr. Fleming was their coach. Let's give him a round of applause for doing such a great job with his coach.
Congratulations.
Mayor, if you want to get a picture, you can take a picture. Mayor, you should get one.
Yeah, Mayor. You know, I probably should make two lines. Put this show, what's in the front? Stand between there. Yeah. There you go. Jimmy. Should've gave Bobby a towel for that. He should've.
All right, thank you.
That takes us to repository sales. Are there anybody here for repository sales?
Just go up to the mic.
Hello.
State your name and your address.
Saquana Gray, 334 East 11th Street.
Noel Remigio, 334 East 11th Street.
We're looking to buy property 431 and 1/2, East 16th Street. We're willing to bring it up to code and resign there if we're being approved. If we prove, we're going to go cut the grass after we leave here.
Yeah, because we went down, we didn't know if we were supposed to. And we was taking some, cleaning it out from the inside and taking stuff out. But then I told her, I don't know if we allowed to do this. It's just, we wanted it to look better than what people think. The house's got a lot of potential, and we would like to have our own home. So we're looking forward to bring it up to code and live in it.
Do council have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll be in touch shortly.
God bless.
Thank you.
Are there any more repository sales? Are there any more repository sales? Last time, are there any more repository sales? That brings us to citizens to be heard, and Jeff Harvey is the first one.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity I've been given to speak. I would like to address...
Your name and address, please.
Oh, my name is Jeff Harvey. I'm sorry.
Your address?
3821 Sunset Boulevard. I would like to address council with concerns I have after recently moving back into the city. I have lived in and around this city my entire life. I was born at Doctor's Osteopathic Hospital. I went to Jones School. I bought candy at JoJo's Superrette at Third and Parade. I played Little League baseball for Super Duper. I met my wonderful and beautiful wife in this town, and together, we have six amazing children. I have loved this city for most of my life, however, I use "loved" in the past tense because I'm not so sure anymore. Last November, my wife and I moved from the county back into the city, and unfortunately, I have questioned my decision to do so. Everyone knows an innocent until proven guilty, and I believe in it. However, certain positions in a society face greater scrutiny when questions and conflicts arise. A quote by George Orwell, "A people that elect and support corrupt politicians are not victims but accomplices." The Webster Dictionary definition of trust is a firm belief in the reliability, truth, ability, or strength of someone or something. Also, it is the confidence placed in a person. Citizens must be able to trust their elected officials, or there is a risk of a complete societal breakdown. The embezzling and defrauding of nearly $100,000 does not bolster a citizen's trust in their elected officials. The threatening of violence against citizens by elected officials also does nothing to bolster this trust. The disappointment of the city's top elected official to sit idly by and not even make a recommendation does nothing to bolster this trust. As an Erie citizen, it is my belief that certain members of city councils should step aside until legal matters are resolved. If these elected officials truly want to do what is right for the citizens of Erie and they truly love this city, then a decision to be made is easy and obvious. Along with confidence in their elected officials, citizens should also have confidence and trust in their police department. Police officers have a difficult job. I would not want to be in their position. They put their lives on the line every day to support complete strangers. However, respect is for those who deserve it, not demand it. A badge does not give an officer the right to act like a thug. A badge does not give an officer an advantage to get away with actions and crimes that the rest of society would be punished for. Over the past few years, the citizens of Erie have seen police officers get away with harassment, assault, and even murder. Most recently, a certain veteran police officer, with assistance from other officers, while protecting a man who assaulted a woman, arrested this woman's husband, and while he was being held by three officers to the ground and already in handcuffs, he was tased. When the woman went to check on her husband, she was pushed down by this same officer, hit, and the result was a broken wrist, and which she has to have surgery for. As usual, and I can't blame the citizens of Erie for believing nothing will be done by the mayor, the chief of police, city council, or the DA's office, because, quite frankly, that's the way the city seems to operate recently. I know I'm not supposed to address members directly, but Mrs. Arrington, I am sorry for the loss of your child. It is a pain that I can't even imagine, nor do I want to. Despite recent reports, I know you love this city, and I thank you for your service and everything you have done for us. Mr. Witherspoon? When I played high school basketball, I loved seeing you as an official because I know we were going to get a fair game, so thank you for that. In conclusion, I do want to love this city again. I want elected officials to do the right things for the citizens of Erie. I want elected officials to step aside when the citizens no longer trust them. I want elected officials to fight for the citizens of Erie, not challenge them to a fight. I want police officers to protect its citizens, not harm them. Until we all start to take responsibility, until we do all we can to improve the character of our communities, we'll never break this cycle of corruption, violence, and indifference. I want this city to flourish. I want to fight for the success of this city. Why do I want to fight for this city? Must just be the Erie boy in me. Thank you.
Excuse me. Before, Jason, just a minute. Before our next citizen is to be heard, I would like our attorney, Mr. Betza, to step up and address the rules and the guidelines of this meeting, please.
My name is Edward Betza. I'm the solicitor for the city of Erie. The past several meetings, and this happens a lot, where people feel very passionate about specific individuals on council or on elected boards, and they want to take specific action. What I want to do is I want to make sure everything remains calm and happy tonight. So what I want to do is just explain it. There are two, this is a business meeting of the council. And citizens have two rights with respect to that meeting. They have the right to observe, not necessarily participate or interject or debate, but you have the right to observe. The second right that you have is the right to be heard. But the right to be heard is about council action, things that are properly before council. And so, for example, to use a ridiculous example, if I want to debate who should win, the Cavaliers or the Celtics, that's not appropriate to come up and take council's time on explaining why you feel strongly about LeBron James or about a member of the Celtics. When we're talking about specific council members, council has a rule that you can't address them specifically. It's there for a reason. The problem is that you may well feel that some member of council is doing a great job or is doing a poor job. But it's not proper for, it's not something that council can do anything about. Council doesn't have the power to reward a council member, nor can they remove a council member. So while I don't doubt that many of you feel passionate one way or another on many issues, it's not really an issue before council. So some of you have stood up and in the past have said, "Look, I don't think Ms. Arrington should be on council. She should resign." You're entitled to that opinion. Some of you feel, "No, she should stay. She has every right to stay." You're entitled to that opinion. But at the end of the day, she's elected by the taxpayers. She cannot be removed, no matter what anyone thinks. She cannot be removed by any member of this council or by the mayor. It cannot happen. If there was a conviction of a crime, that's a different story. There have been statements about Mr. Witherspoon. And while Mr. Witherspoon, I think, has candidly said he may not have handled himself the perfect way, some of us may say, "Look, he should step down." We're entitled to that opinion. Some of us say, "Darn it, he shouldn't step down." You're entitled to that opinion. But council cannot remove Mr. Witherspoon? He has not done anything that allows him to remove him. So it's not, while I don't debate or I don't doubt the sincerity of people's comments, it's not something that is properly before council. It's not something that council can take action on. So when people make comments specifically to individuals, whether positive or negative, if it's not properly a council function, what's going to happen is that conversation or that comment has to be cut off. So what I would ask is, as we go forward, let's please try to be respectful, but let's try to bring things to council that council can take action on. And removal of individual council members is not something that they have the power to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Betza. Jason?
Okay. Jason Brendel, 4131 McCallan Avenue, Erie, PA 16510. First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you to the citizens of Erie. Thank you for turning out the vote yesterday with our elections in our process of why we are here. Thank you for voting. Voting is one of the powers why we're here. So I just want to say thank you and congratulations, Erie City Councilman Bob Murzky, on your nomination.
Good evening, Erie City Council, Madam President, Mayor Schenberg Administration, and fellow citizens. Tonight, I am here again requesting and asking what is in this bag to be raised June 30th, 2018, a date in which the LGBT community unites together to celebrate our community. In San Francisco, on June 26th, 1978, this symbol, this banner, was raised at San Francisco's Civic Center. And these colors represent what my community embodies. Artist Gilbert Baker stitched this banner with volunteers from the San Francisco Gay Community Center. This celebrates the diversity of our community. It celebrates the diversity of the LGBT community. Red represents life. Orange represents healing. Yellow represents sunlight. Green represents nature. Blue represents serenity. Indigo represents serenity. Violet represents spirit. On October 15th, across the globe, this banner is raised because it's Spirit Day. And Spirit Day, it comes from the violet stripe for spirit. And what Spirit Day indicates is for the LGBT youth, anti-bullying. It means we wear purple because we stand up against the bullies of the world and the bullies, period. Across the Commonwealth, other cities like Philadelphia, Harrisburg, and Pittsburgh all raise this banner for pride. By raising this during pride, it could symbolize a new era in the city of Erie with inclusion and transparency. This also could mean our municipal equality index from the Human Rights Campaign could be rising. I know I've spoken to the city council and the mayor's administration, but fellow citizens, in 2014, our equality index was 57 out of 100. 2017, it was 39 out of 100. And in another one, it was 39 out of 100. That's the lowest in the Commonwealth. Well, I yield the rest of my time to give this gift to Mayor Schenberg and Erie City Council and to the citizens of Erie because can we begin a new tradition and a new era in transforming Erie to proudly raise Gilbert Baker's banner?
Several matters I wanted to bring before the council. The first is, on your agenda, there's an approval of $1.66 million towards the destruction of the McBride viaduct. There is a serious problem with proceeding with the viaduct issue, and that is that the NEPA review was not refiled when there were significant changes made to the plan. That is a legal matter that should be concluded successfully before anything further proceeds on demolition. The solicitor can check on that. I believe a demand letter was issued saying, "Stop until that is filed." Our communications with PennDOT were such that they have not filed because they're awaiting the design of the extension of the wall between the pedestrians and the arterial traffic. Now, being an architect, I don't know how on earth they're going to even design that wall to satisfy all the design constraints on that situation. But obviously, they haven't done it yet, and I think it's a grave mistake to do anything further until these matters are resolved appropriately. The other thing about the agenda item is that the successful bid was $1.45 million, and they're asking in the agenda for $1.66 million, and there's no explanation for what that extra money is for. To this date, we have requested numerous... He has not done anything that allows him to remove him. So it's not, while I don't debate or I don't doubt the sincerity of people's comments, it's not something that is properly before council. It's not something that council can take action on. So when people make comments specifically to individuals, whether positive or negative, if it's not properly a council function, what's going to happen is that conversation or that comment has to be cut off. So what I would ask is as we go forward, let's please try to be respectful, but let's try to bring things to council that council can take action on. And removal of individual council members is not something that they have the power to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Betza. Jason?
Jason Brendel, 4131 McCallan Avenue, Erie, PA 16510. First and foremost, I'd like to say thank you to the citizens of Erie. Thank you for turning out the vote yesterday with our elections in our process of why we are here. Thank you for voting. Voting is one of the powers why we're here. So I just want to say thank you and congratulations, Erie City Councilman Bob Mursky, on your nomination. Good evening, Erie City Council, Madam President, Mayor's Schenberg Administration, and fellow citizens. Tonight, I am here again requesting and asking what is in this bag to be raised June 30th, 2018, a date in which the LGBT community unites together to celebrate our community. In San Francisco, on June 26, 1978, this symbol, this banner was raised at San Francisco's Civic Center. And these colors represent what my community embodies. Artist Gilbert Baker stitched this banner with volunteers from the San Francisco Gay Community Center. This celebrates the diversity of our community. It celebrates the diversity of the LGBT community. Red represents life. Orange represents healing. Yellow represents sunlight. Green represents nature. Blue represents serenity. Indigo represents serenity. Violet represents spirit. On October 15th, across the globe, this banner is raised because it's Spirit Day. And Spirit Day, it comes from the violet stripe for spirit. And what Spirit Day indicates is, is for the LGBT youth, anti-bullying. It means we wear purple because we stand up against the bullies of the world and the bullies, period. Across the Commonwealth, other cities like Philadelphia, Harrisburg, and Pittsburgh all raise this banner for pride. By raising this during pride, it could symbolize a new era in the city of Erie with inclusion and transparency. This also could mean our municipal equality index from the Human Rights Campaign could be rising. I know I've spoken to the city council and the mayor's administration, but fellow citizens, in 2014, our equality index was 57 out of 100. 2017, it was 39 out of 100. And in another one, it was 39 out of 100. That's the lowest in the Commonwealth. Well, I yield the rest of my time to give this gift to Mayor Schenberg and Erie City Council and to the citizens of Erie because can we begin a new tradition and a new era in transforming Erie to proudly raise Gilbert Baker's banner?
Okay.
When I open it up, we open it up. We open it up.
Several matters I wanted to bring before the council. The first is, on your agenda, there's an approval of $1.66 million towards the destruction of the McBride viaduct. There is a serious problem with proceeding with the viaduct issue, and that is that the NEPA review was not refiled when there were significant changes made to the plan. That is a legal matter that should be concluded successfully before anything further proceeds on demolition. The solicitor can check on that. I believe a demand letter was issued saying, "Stop until that is filed." Our communications with PennDOT were such that they have not filed because they're awaiting the design of the extension of the wall between the pedestrians and the arterial traffic. Now, being an architect, I don't know how on earth they're going to even design that wall to satisfy all the design constraints on that situation. But obviously, they haven't done it yet, and I think it's a grave mistake to do anything further until these matters are resolved appropriately. The other thing about the agenda item is that the successful bid was $1.45 million, and they're asking in the agenda for $1.66 million, and there's no explanation for what that extra money is for. To this date, we have requested numerous times a clarification on why the engineer's fee was so outrageously exorbitant on a demolition job. We've got no answer on that, and meanwhile, the numbers keep flying back and forth all over the place. You can never nail down what number means what. And I think it's council's responsibility to nail it down and get it completely clarified. Where is this money going? So I'm requesting that council pay that some attention, and if you're going to do things, make sure we do them right and appropriately. The next issue is, I would like for somebody to get the lights turned back on the viaduct. Essentially, by killing the lights, and you can't blame the contractor for it, it's his job site, but he was supposed to be required to keep the viaduct functional until such time as it was to be made unfunctional. And by taking the lights down, you've essentially said to every second and third shift worker that uses the viaduct, "You don't matter." Please, let's be an equal city to everybody and respect all people and get the lights back on while the viaduct is supposed to be remaining in service. The next thing is, I want to congratulate the mayor's team on getting the $1.25 million Safe Roots to School and Pet and Bike improvements. That's something that we at Bike Erie advocate heavily for. We're very excited that it seems, and this is an assumption on my part, it seems as though the strategy of getting a grant writer on the fifth floor is paying dividends. By all means, I congratulate that, applaud it, and say, "Great job, keep going." We're very interested in having discussions about how that money's being spent. So Bike Erie offers their conversation to anyone who'd like to contact us. It's a wonderful board of real doers and shakers and volunteers, and we welcome any conversation about how that's going to be proceeded upon. The next item is an observation from tonight that I think is worth all of us making. The two award exercises that were done tonight were an incredibly, incredibly diverse group of award winners. And those awards were not gifts, they were hard-earned by an extremely diverse group of students today. I think we need to recognize that. One of the things that is a squandered opportunity in Erie is we don't take advantage of our diversity nearly enough. We need to do that better, and tonight was a great example of, without much help, that diversity is shown through and represented Erie in an exemplary fashion. So I'm asking, let's please focus on empowering the diversity that we have here. It's rare. Do you know the area of the viaduct is one of the most diverse neighborhoods in the entire country? And with that, I thank you, everybody, for the service and giving me a few minutes. Thank you.
Basically, I'm just going to mention again, I'm very much in favor of having a public hearing. I think the citizens of Erie deserve it. And I would like to say this, I've been to just about every meeting on the bridge, and I have not really heard anyone negative on it. The people that are there, their main concern, they're doing this without pay. They're doing, devoting a lot of time and energy into it. It's something like, here not too long ago, we had an ordinance, I believe it was, to save the houses on West Sixth Street before it gets tore down. And again, why shouldn't we have a viaduct hearing before it's tore down? It's one of those things that, you know, when, West Sixth Street tearing down a house, we're talking basically one family used that house, whereas the viaduct, multiple to the families walked that bridge every day, back and forth. And again, if any of you had children, or you had your wife, or someone walking, would you want them to walk on the bayfront, close to a half a mile further on a round trip, particularly with some of the weather we have here in Erie? I don't think so. These people that are working on the viaduct, they're not trying to hurt the city. They're trying to do something good for the city, and they're not negative on there. They would just love to sit down and try to work something out that would be very feasible to everyone concerned in the city. Like I said, the city is, it's in a turning point, but we're devoting a lot of attention towards the bayfront. We're talking, we're talking about putting bridges down on the bayfront. I wonder how many people actually would be walking across that bayfront? You've got a hospital, basically, there. I think in the long run, it's going to hurt if we don't sit down and try to work something out on that. The other thing I wanted to bring up tonight was, I brought this up several times, we just recently had a meeting down there in, at the Blasco Library about the energy. I think it was kind of something like a dollar twenty-five a month on your bill. I brought this up, and I've got correspondence, and I'm going to turn over to the city, and hopefully, somebody will take the ball on this thing. I've gone as far as I can, representation through Kelly's office and some others, but that Spectrum Control, with them at the end of this year, around September, I should say, they're going to start charging $5.99 if you go to Spectrum. It's the same company. If you stay with Time Warner, same company, $11.99 per box. So if you have one television in there, two, I've heard some people, they have upwards of six TVs, which would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about $70 a month more. This is going to be millions and millions of dollars that's not going to come back into the city. It's going to a corporation. At one time, I thought the city had control of what Spectrum was able to do, or Time Warner, whatever it was at the time with the cable. Like I said, we've got to do something because we're talking millions of dollars that is not coming back into our economy in the city. And somebody has to, you know, my understanding was that in order to have cable, they had to go through the city. And this is something that's very, very important because there's going to be, like I said, come September, that's when the free time is up on the, you know, with Spectrum, Time Warner and that. And they have a lot of gimmicks on there, like if you switch over to Spectrum, you lose some channels, then you have to upgrade. So it's another thing. The only reason that they went in, one of the main reasons, was they said they were getting piracy. Why should I, or why should any of us in the city be paying anywhere from $6 to $12 a month in round figures because of piracy? And if you have more than one television, add that up. Again, I'm going to turn this over to the city, and hopefully, someone will contact me, I'll work with them.
I am a member of Erie CPR, and I'm here in regard to the McBride Bridge. I think you might agree that we do the most good for the most people when we empower them to do it for themselves. But if there is a power imbalance, it can blunt and even destroy their initiative to try, and everyone knows you can't fail if you don't try. We are being bullied by the Erie Times News and their opinion writers. They have made themselves clear. They want us to shut up and go away, but they attack us without giving the public the true facts of the situation. And without a public hearing, the public will never know the true facts of the economic value, the social value, and the moral value that saving the McBride Bridge will have in making the east side of Erie and, along with the city of Erie, a better place to live. Can an inanimate object have a soul? Yes, it can. Think of the Statue of Liberty, the American flag, the city of Erie. The McBride Bridge has a soul. It represents safe passage for the children of the east side over very dangerous and treacherous railroad tracks. Do the city fathers and mothers really believe that the parents of children on the east side care any less than the parents for the safety of their children than the parents of the children in Glenwood Hills or Frontier Park do? The public has heard nothing but negative opinions from our local paper, giving the impression and exposing itself as an intrinsically duplicitous racially biased institution. Institutional racism is like passive aggression, a hard thing to expose. Everyone is afraid to stand up and be counted. These children need and deserve your protection. God knows their little lives are a daily struggle. And in a quote from John McCain, I would like to say, "In the end, what you fight for is the real test." I know there are two super bridges out on Milfair Road to the Costa, over the railroad tracks, to the cost of probably millions of dollars. And Milfair Road used to be an old country road. There are some beautiful developments out there now. And, but I would guess that there may be two or three people jogging on Milfair Road over the tracks and maybe a couple bike riders, but nothing compared to the traffic on the McBride Bridge. And I understand that Bill Pettit, the head of the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, lives on Milfair Road, so that probably is why Milfair Road got two brand-new multimillion-dollar bridges. But I think an investment in the east side in the McBride Bridge would be well worth your money and your time. And I think if we can put money in those ridiculous bumpouts that are in the city, if we can find the money for things like bumpouts, we should be able to find the money to keep our children safe in the city. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good evening, council, mayor. I wanted to start just by pointing your attention to the Erie Times News section
Name and address.
Lisa Austin, 1262 West Ninth. Today's section B2 notes that the Villa Chapel is on its way to good health, thanks to Hance. They're investing in saving that building that's been slowly being demolished by neglect for some time now. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, a piece of good news here in Erie. I wanted to also make sure, it seems, one of the things I've discovered in this whole long story about the viaduct is that many people are not aware of the facts. They're hearing kind of one-sided information, which is, again, why we've been asking and pleading and expecting, actually, that a public hearing was going to occur. I wanted to make sure, again, many people don't realize that the story of the viaduct made the front page of the New York Times and that it was identified as a, that this particular controversy is a spotlight on Erie's legacy of disenfranchisement and troubled race relations. And they say the legacy lives on. As you know, the 24/7 Wall Street found that 47% of the city's population lives at or below poverty level. Any rate, this is, I think many of the people in the audience probably aren't even aware of this, but one of the troubling things, I think, is that our administration has gotten some bad advice around this issue, and one of the key advisors to the administration is quoted here in the paper saying some kind of amazing things. Again, this is an advisor to the administration, said, quote, "I cannot find the type of housing with neighbors I would want to live with on the east side." "We need to prepare people to move out of those neighborhoods." Those are quotes from the mayor's advisor. And this is the same advisor who advised against, quote, "Investing in failing neighborhoods," and that's why he is against saving the viaduct. This shocking information needs to be more broadly known, and I want to also say that there's other bad advice that I know the administration is getting. I've been told that there's the implication, at least, that people of color do not care about this issue, and that the people that use the bridge should, you know, haven't spoken up. If you spend some time on the bridge and talk to the people who are using it, and we've been doing it for four and a half years, we haven't met anybody who's using that bridge who would like to see it torn down. And we've seen, you know, many people of color have been involved in this issue. I think that one of the main problems is that there is a sense in the community that to speak out on this issue would be harmful to your advocacy on other issues. So in other words, people are kind of thinking, "Okay, this is a lost cause. I'm going to not, I'm not going to be the nail sticking up." So I'm asking you to, to do what you can, to do what was, we thought, going to already happen, have the public hearing, delay the demolition until then. And I appreciate your time tonight.
Renee Vanetti, Erie, PA. Good evening, taxpayers. Good evening, council. I'm here on behalf of the allegations on one of the council members. I am a taxpayer. I work hard for my money. You are all up here because of us, because of the taxpayers, because of the constituents, the people who vote. As council members, you can do a resolution to remove the person that is the offender. Every one of yous can do that. In the Robert's Rule of Order, it will explain everything you need to do to do that. Obviously, the job is not being done by the president up there because of last week's meeting, or not last week, the week before, the uncontrolled outburst of one of the other council members should have been controlled by the president. It should have been, there was, there was nothing. It was like chaos. The president needs to step up and control the meeting, not no one else. That's their job, and it's not being done. So I feel obviously she's not competent to be up there at this point. Maybe her mind's not there, wishy-washy, who knows? But I do think, that's my money. If I was working for an employer and I stole, I'd be fired. You guys work for me. I'm one of your employers. You stole from me. You can't do that. Any one of yous who works anywhere, if you stole, you'd be fired. You worked for these people here. That's our money, grants, whatever it was, it's our money. It's taxpayers' money. You guys were put in office by us to do the correct job. Have some dignity for yourself, some respect. I just am not happy with the situation. And I want to congratulate you on your win. Thank you.
All signs have to go in the lobby, be held up in the lobby.
Hello. Kate Kelly, 1146 West 23rd Street. I've come tonight as a representative of the Erie CBA Coalition in advocacy of community benefit agreements, being attached to publicly financed projects or projects that are going to get tax abatement. I have a letter here from the JFK Center in support of CBAs, and I'd just like to read it to you real quick. It says, "Dear Kate, the John F. Kennedy Center fully supports strong community benefit agreements, CBAs, and particularly in the city of Erie. CBAs foster trust between the community at large and institutions while getting the best possible outcomes for both parties. When there is a working agreement, people see a development as happening with them, and developers get the best possible return on the investment. I sincerely hope that I will soon see well-designed..." I sincerely hope that I will soon see well-designed CBAs in Erie. Yours for a better tomorrow, Samella Hudson-Bruton." Thank you.
My name is Veronica Rexford. I live at 4124 West Ridge Road. Everybody knows that Erie needs economic growth. There are hundreds of millions of dollars of development either slated or underway, supported by hundreds of millions of more of associated infrastructure. We're all investors in these developments. The projects, whether they have tax abatements, zoning variances, or other exchanges of value, affect everyone. As the city goes, so goes the county. We all deserve a return on our investment. I know many of you are very thoughtful and read and research about the things that you're trying to do to help turn the city around, and I'm gonna reference a report. This is "An Inclusive Recovery in U.S. Cities," written by the Urban Institute Research Organization, and was released in April of 2018. In the introduction, "A decade after the start of the Great Recession, economic recovery in the U.S. has been uneven, not only across cities and regions, but also within them. In many cities that have witnessed significant economic growth, income inequalities are widening. Housing costs are consuming an ever larger share of family incomes, and homelessness is on the rise. In some of these cities, local leaders are prioritizing policies that harness growth for broadly shared benefit, including easing housing affordability pressures, preventing displacement, and strengthening safety nets. In cities that have been left behind by the national recovery or continue to lose ground, local leaders are increasingly linking economic development to inclusion goals to ensure that all residents can contribute to turning around the local economy and share the benefits when economic fortunes shift. Across all types of cities, local leaders are beginning to recognize that economic growth does not automatically lead to inclusion, rather intentional strategies are needed." And by that I mean, you'll all need to work together to make sure that a rising tide lifts all boats. Thank you.
Kevin Pastefka, 722 East Grandview in the city. So I came here tonight to speak a little bit about community benefit agreements as well, or at least advocate for them. I have, work with Erie County United and part of the Community Benefit Agreement Alliance in Erie. I brought with me about letters from 10 different organizations, all supporting the idea of community benefit agreements, and I have petitions with about 200 names signed, and the plan will be to keep those petitions coming. So the more you want, the more we'll get, because the support seems overwhelming when we talk to people door-to-door. I'll read a letter from one of the organizations that I belong to, but that also sent this letter of endorsement, it's from the NAACP. It was adopted by a unanimous vote, April 24th. And it says, "Be resolved that the Erie branch of the NAACP stands in strong support of using community benefit agreements as a tool for advancing equitable development. Community benefits are assets available through economic development that meet real community needs. Examples include community access to living wage jobs, affordable housing, health and community services, and open space. We are all investors in the big development projects, either slated or already underway in Erie, whether it's tax credits, zoning variances, height variances, or the inconvenience of streets closed for months at a time, the people pay. While hundreds of millions of dollars are flowing into these projects, now is your opportunity to make certain that a rising tide really does lift all boats. With high poverty rates, the lowest-income zip code in the state, and reports naming Erie as the worst city for Black Americans, it is incumbent on the city and county officials to hold developers to standards of equitable development, and we believe that CBAs are that tool." So that's from one organization. We've got 10 more letters like that. I'll give it to you tonight, along with the petitions. I'd also like to chime in a little bit on the Viaduct discussion. Of course, I'm in favor of keeping it, keeping the east side safe for kids, but the thing that struck me tonight was when I read the ordinance for first reading, and it says, "An ordinance appropriating the sum of 1.6 million from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of the McBride Viaduct." Now, that would be great if the word "construction" meant "construction," but, I mean, it's almost like Orwellian to call it the "construction phase" when the actual money's being used for the demolition. So hopefully, we can resolve these issues via a public hearing and save that thing. I'll give you the reports here.
I reside at 711 Myrtle Street Apartment 2. I'm here in support of the Community Benefits Agreements Coalition. I want to make it clear that the coalition is not anti-development, as some people may say it is, but what we're trying to do as a group of community organizations and individuals is to take a proactive approach to preventing gentrification. Gentrification being the process of which development comes and pushes lower-income people or people of color out of their neighborhoods, or in making great changes in strides in the new community, makes it harder for people to access the community that they're familiar with, or excludes them from the new benefits of a given city. So all we are asking is to do no harm and to take a proactive approach to protecting citizens and making sure that citizens are being heard as new changes are coming and not excluding them from the process. So yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you. Good night.
Brent Davis. One of my shop locations is 459 East 17th. I'm here to address the county and the city's overall economic development plan and some of the studies of which you've taken here recently last week under advisement. I was fortunate enough to spend the last five, six days last week in Seattle, meeting with essentially the number-three guy for corporate global of Amazon in Seattle. Spent six days with this individual, learning the ins and outs of Amazon, an absolute global distribution powerhouse. To give you an example of the life changes in which Amazon brought to Seattle, $250 million in revenue per year, taxes, over 52,000 jobs that they created, and you're talking jobs between 50,000 and over $100,000 a year. These are jobs at great wages, and these are people that, some of them, don't require a ton of skill. The other thing is the tertiary jobs in which a company like Amazon creates, 1.5 tertiary jobs per job that they create. Now, me, being involved in the community, wanting to bring opportunities to Erie and going out and actively using my own money to pursue these because our Chamber of Commerce essentially does nothing, our politicians sit here in their hands, so it's up to the private business sector to bring these opportunities to Erie. Simple enough, right? Well, wrong. When I sit there and have these conversations, one-on-one with these individuals that are the shot callers, the first thing this individual did, pulled up his phone, Googled Erie, and the first five stories they seen was the debacle we heard about tonight. We're not even gonna get back into that because everybody from coast to coast knows about this. It's an absolute embarrassment. How can we, when you've got companies, and I've even got some things, and I got a newspaper article for y'all to read, here are three different examples of what was been offered to Google for just hubs. Chula Vista, California, offered them free land. Fresno, California, offered control over the municipal services and the way they spend their revenue. Chicago waived income taxes for all Amazon employees. Now, what am I getting at? The fact that there are other cities actively pursuing businesses and courting them to come here with honey, and we're sitting here doing studies on punitive revenue on LERTA plans? We're hunting businesses with vinegar. How can we create jobs when we're not creating the carrot? Everybody knows whether raising a pet, or raising a child, or any kind of positive reinforcement, there has to be a carrot. What is our carrot in the city of Erie? Well, we can't even get to the point where we pitch 'em. John Persinger is out in Seattle right now. We essentially passed each other in the air, in Seattle, following up on other business opportunities. You've got Amazon, that I'll leave this study, I mean, it's too lengthy to get into, but essentially, Amazon's under a head tax with these businesses. They want to tax Amazon $500 per employee per year. That's an additional 37 million and a half, or 37 and a half million on top of 250 that they're already paying, and that's not even counting property taxes. It's no wonder why they're looking for a secondary headquarters. You've got Boeing relocating. You've got Zillow, that's also in Seattle, relocating. My point being that I'll leave you with this, is you all have immense power. Creating public policy, we're not keeping up. We're in the Stone Age when it comes to public policy. We are not going to be able to court these people. We have cheap land, we have a skilled labor force, we've got great universities, and we've got an airport that we've spent tens and tens of millions of dollars on. We've got access to waterways, we've got access to the highways. We've got everything that Amazon wants. In their two-to-three-year plan, they want a physical location in any community that has from 200,000 to a million people. That's absolutely Erie Harbor Creek, Mill Creek. That is us. But with the antics that we have on council and the inactive business approach and poor public policy, we will never be in contention for this. I implore you to look amongst yourselves, do the right thing for our city and our region, and straighten this mess out, and let's move forward and create some jobs. That's all I have to say. I'll leave this with council. Thank you for your time.
My name is Andrew Cherpak. I am no longer resident of Erie. My current residence is 3 through 3 East 34th Street, New York, New York. I guess my temporary residence while visiting family is 2212 Fairmont Parkway. And I'm here to address two issues. I guess both are about bridges. One is a physical bridge, and you could say the other is a spiritual bridge. And both are being, are being torn down in their own ways. And the first bridge is the Viaduct. It has already been torn down, in a sense, by the lack of discussion, by the complete refusal of members of City Hall and, and the rest of the community to support a public hearing. You know, I almost didn't even want to speak on this issue because I feel it's futile. Everything that needed to be said has been said and has been repeated with increasing precision, accuracy, and there has been nothing but a flat silence. And that silence is obvious. It's a silence because there's nothing to say, because they've cornered. And if you read ancient Greek literature, you will hear about how the tyrant, those who are in power, who want to abuse their power, were enforced into a situation, they just become silent. Because when you're silent, there can't be a conversation. You could come up, the public could bring the most glorious, truthful, accurate description of what's happening. If no, and if the other side won't speak, there's, there's no conversation. So, you know, I just want to share two things. You know, I've been in Erie for about a month, and I'm going back soon. And I sat on the Viaduct at the apex of it, and I read for a while. And I was speaking to whatever students were coming to and fro, and I spoke to one kid, and I asked him about the Viaduct, and he told me that his fear of when it's torn down is he can't avoid bullies. Think about it. When we were all little, we had a bully, someone who, when walking to school, we wanted to avoid. Well, having the Viaduct and having the Bayfront connected, there's some flexibility. Tearing that down, you're basically channeling people into a canal, like cattle. And essentially, the implicit message that will live on for generations is, hit the highway. What does "hit the highway" mean? That, what does the implicit message, we don't, we don't care about you, you're on your own, it's up to you to find your way? And I find that odious and just completely apprehensible. Another anecdote I want to share is, and I think this is the subtlety that is missed and that you can only get from people like Lisa and Adam Charlan, the amazing team that has been addressing this, is going and speaking to the people. I'm actually gonna bring something from Columbus, Ohio, where I went to school. I remember I caught the bus, and I remember there was a man who I would often speak to, and over time, over the months, we became friends. And at one point, I realized he was walking out of his way to go to another bus stop, far out of his way, on more of a quieter street, and I asked him. We became acquaintances, friendly, and I said, "Why are you taking, why are you sitting here and not over there when you live all the way around?" And he said, "You know what? Growing up poor, I never had a chance to afford a car." And you know what? I don't like being the age I am, having the lack of opportunities I've had, and having to see life pass me, by having to see 16-year-olds. I'm not hating them, but it's rubbing into my face every time I see that. And it's that sort of thing that really, I completely forgot about it until I thought about people being forced to walk alongside a highway. And literally, this, I think that's taken to the symbolic aspect of this, that's really felt on an implicit level, you could say, of the soul. Life passing you by, speeding you by, with the sort of violence, a trembling, a ferocity. There's something about it, just that on all levels, do we really want to take one of the most beleaguered neighborhoods of our city and force them into a more, a situation that can only exacerbate whatever feelings of being left out, whatever feelings of not being a part and included? The second thing I want to address, I have no stones to cast, I only have roses. And I wish I could, I wished there were physical roses I could have bought, because I would have loved to have given to one particular member, member of this council, who by my lights and from far away in a place like New York City, has been an inspiration to me. And when I felt, you know, uprooted in New York, thinking, "How can I become part of this community?", I thought back to that member of council and how, what she, what could have thrown her into a bottomless resignation, bitterness, she transformed through love to become a great leading elder in the forest of leading elders, in the heart of our community. To think about this vitriol, this ferocious, almost hyena-like, frenetic, feverish attempt to just, not even, not even to bring into question what, what has she had to endure to sit in the seat she now sits? And I could say a lot more, my time is up, but I just want to say thank you to that person.
Evening, Council, and Mayor Schember. My name's John Whaley. I live at 447 Gordon Lane. Irony is a tough thing to explain to people that don't get it. The irony that I've seen tonight of talking about the rules which citizens should follow, the time allotment, the banging the gavel to say, "Where do you live?", there's an irony there that we are being held to a very high standard to just come up here and talk. And there are folks that may be under federal indictment that don't seem to be held to the same limits. I'm thankful that we have hired Attorney Betsa. I'm very impressed. You're not slouching, you're talking, you're intelligent. The mayor outsourced a vital function to get great results and to save money. There are 30 departments in the city budget that you're gonna deliberate on shortly, where you could look at ways to get better service at a lower cost. You've outsourced one. There's dozens of places where you can get experts to come in, do their job, help us, and save money. So glad, glad we have that. You have a final passage tonight, number one, talking about amending the rental agreement for landlords. This thing's been around since 2007, and it's apparently a debacle. You collect about $500,000 a year. You pay BIU about $350 to inspect the units. You get $150,000 a year left over. Supposed to be a revenue-neutral program, so that $150 gets absorbed into the general fund. You pay a little bit of Andy's salary, and a little bit of this salary, and a little bit of this, and a little bit of that. It's not really what it's supposed to be. So while people have not paid their $40, and we've given leeway to some of them because they need it, I've not been given any leeway on my taxes. I wasn't given leeway today paying my parking tickets. I'm not. I'm not given leeway. We need to stop with the leeway. If you don't pay your $40, something needs to happen. So this part here, it looks like you're going to reward the good ones. Let's figure out how to take care of the bad ones. So the number that's floating around is you've lost about $300,000. But in 11 years, $150,000 a year has gone into the general fund. So we've got about 1.7 million, in my math, that's unaccounted for. You're already paying code enforcement, you're already paying this guy, you're already paying that guy. Where's the $150 going? It's not just a loss of $200,000 or $300,000. I will talk about the main reason I'm here. I do think that although innocent until proven guilty is a concept, I'm not arguing that. I'm not asking for anybody to go to jail, I'm not saying anybody's guilty. I'm saying that just yesterday, in the city of Baltimore, the African-American police chief was accused of not paying his taxes, and he did the right thing, and he stepped down. And he said, "I can't hold this job, and I can't have the public trust knowing doing what I did." You can Google it, just happened yesterday, it's all over the papers. This person did not have to quit. He is innocent until proven guilty. And he may come up with a deal where he doesn't even pay all of his taxes, he's going to pay a little bit of taxes or whatever. He did the right thing, and he stepped down. Innocent until proven guilty also is maybe not the correct way to say it. You're not guilty unless you're proven guilty. And if anybody's watched the Mad Genius Pizza Bomber, Marjorie D. Armstrong killed her first husband, and shot him seven times, and was found not guilty, and her lawyer was Lenny Ambrose, arguably one of the finest attorneys this town has ever seen. So you can have a good attorney, and you could be found not guilty, that does not mean you're innocent. And then lastly, I almost brought a white-prop flag with me, and some people asked me not to, because you can't bring props, but I wanted to wave it and say, "I give up, you win." I come here and I've talked for 10 years about taxes, about human resource issues, about everything. I don't feel anything gets done. I think there's a stone wall. And if you listen to most of the people that talk tonight, a lot of them echo the same sentiment. We come here and we talk, we're talking about the viaduct, it's still coming down. We're talking about jobs, you're talking about hurting people that want to have LERTA. So I know I'm not the only one, I'm not going to give up, I didn't bring the flag, I don't own a flag, I'm not going to give up. So we're going to come here every week and talk, and we hope that in caucus, you listen, et cetera. And then lastly, back to Attorney Betsa, I think the one reason people come here and say things that may not... Thanks.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members. My name is Jerry Knight, and I live at 23962 Thorn Apple Drive, which is for you that know the area well, it's in Cambridge Springs. But my wife and I are moving back to Erie County here shortly. We're in the process of building a home, and we're looking forward to it. I think most of you may know me, I think I've known most of you and worked with you over the years, had great relationships and enjoyed it. I want to, two things. One, I want to congratulate the mayor, who's doing a fantastic job. I'm tired of watching you every day, all the meetings you're at, and I mean, late night tonight, you're really doing a yeoman's job. And I'm really appreciative of the change of attitude with regard to infusing new business and new excitement into the city. Congratulations to you and your administration, all the hard work you're doing. The other issue, and I really wasn't going to speak, but the more, you know, when the solicitor got up and made some mention about the rules tonight, and I thought, "Well, I really have to say something because that really fried me in a way." I think I served for nine years as chief of staff to congressman, working for years with constituents, both happy ones and both negative. And I always thought, "Well, that's really your right, I'm here to listen, that's my job, that's what I get paid for, that's why my boss hired me." And so, you know, you take the good with the bad. But one of the things that came up in this whole incident that's been brought up about being indicted, and I'm not talking about any individual, I'm talking about the future, is that, and the solicitor mentioned this, I think, in one of the interviews that he had in local media, that you can't be removed, only the state, there's no state law. But I think there's a resolution that council can pass that may even be as limited as just saying that the individual might have to step down, or individuals, could be individuals, until the matter's cleared up, and I think that would be only a fair thing. If I was a police officer, I would expect that. If I was a public servant and I was indicted on charges, no matter what the charge. And again, I'm not picking on any individual. What I'm worried about is the future of this. And what most ticked me off, and I got to tell you this seriously, having worked, you know, in politics for constituents, what ticked me off was that most people saying, "There's really nothing we can do." And I'm there, "Really? Seriously? If it was really, I mean, I'm talking, if serious charges were made, and that we would all stand around and say, 'Really, there's nothing we can do'?" I just don't buy that. I think there's got to be, and I talk about for county council as well, that there's got to be, I would hope, a policy where you guys develop a resolution, and you can make it as broad, as limited, whatever, that merely states that, you know, until the matter's cleared up, we'd ask you to take a leave of absence, whatever, to reinstate the trust that voters... You know, look, I know, it takes years to develop trust, hard work, dedication, and all that gets eroded pretty quick. And it may or may not be, anything you did or didn't do, it's just the fact that you've been indicted. And I think that, I would think that if I was serving on council, I would advise you to adopt, draft a resolution and pass it, not just for today, but I'm talking seriously about years in the future, that if this comes up, and I think maybe, since you have the solicitor here, and I know he gets paid by taxpayers, maybe you can address that, I don't know, but it seems to be the hole in the system that, you know, it's as simple as just passing and adopting a resolution to go forward. So I would implore you to do that. Thank you.
Madam President, please, you know, we listen to you all the time. What is it that you can't keep quiet for a while? This is a public meeting, not a circus. Now, we sit here all night listening to you properly, show the same dignity.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard?
My name is Howard Bibbs. I live at 2931 State Street. Nobody really knows where I live, do they? I live on Chestnut. I always come here and say, "I'm the mayor on Chestnut." All right? So I just was testing people. But I got to test for everybody. I know there's a big thing about the viaduct, and it seems like people that come up here, they're using the fact that minorities can't get across that bridge or whatever. But where were these people when Burton School was closed? Where were they? The majority of the people that I know on the east side is from Broad Street over. All right? And how many people do you think is in that neighborhood? Two, 300 kids, maybe? Even more? But they closed Burton. Nobody said a word. Nobody said a word. Then I'm listening to people talking about money taken out of their pockets. I've been battling this situation for the last two years, about, since 2012, about money being taken out of the residents of Erie's pocket. Got nothing to do with the city, but when I'm doing that battle, I'm the only one there. I'm the only one there. As a matter of fact, after six years, I won that battle. At least I heard what I wanted to hear. I knew I was right, I knew I was correct in what I was saying, but I didn't see nobody. So it seems like people tend to use people when it's to their advantage to use people. Now, that's what I'm tired of. If you've got something to say, say it. If you're hurting, say you're hurting. If you're scared, say you're scared. But don't come up here and start pointing, talking, because we're using all of these examples that has nothing to do with what's going on. People talking about what's going on in New Hampshire, talking about what's going on down in North Carolina. Well, why don't you talk about the mayor in New York City that was smoking crack and smoking marijuana, and came down and punched a woman in the face? Nobody's seen that. Nobody's seen that. All right? Nobody's seen that. What about in South Carolina when the same thing happened? We had a gentleman said, people were laughing in that area, and he came through South Carolina and North Carolina. He didn't say nothing about that. It just seems like people are not putting things in order, they're not in order. Yeah, we can make a whole bunch of new rules, new laws. The one good thing that I saw was people were signing up today when they came up to speak. But normally, they don't. A lot of people don't. They just come up here and speak, and they leave. All right? Now, there's another thing that's going on in our city. I don't know anybody paid attention to it, but these drains, these drains, whoever put those drains in, there's supposed to have been a spacer or something, but if you can go throughout the city, those drains are falling. They're actually falling. I mean, they're going into the ground like this, going into the ground, just going in, just disappearing, just disappearing. You turn the corner, your car's scraping the road because you don't want into the drain. So there's a lot of things that are going on, but it really irks me when somebody's going to use a group of people to make their point, but they didn't say nothing about Burton. That's when they should have been up here making a point. Those people could have walked to school, they could have walked, they didn't have to go across that bridge. That bridge was put here for manufacturers. Say it like it is. It was put here for manufacturers to keep these big trucks from coming through our towns, tearing up our roads. That's why that bridge was mainly put here. Nobody's seen anything that's supposed to be going on after the bridge, but I've seen a lot. I've seen things, what they're going to be doing, how they're going to be making the sidewalk wider, going up the highway and so forth, making the sidewalk wider, you know, a little wider, so people don't have to be standing on the curb. Everybody is not correct. They're not researching their information.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last call. Are there any more citizens to be heard? That takes us to ordinances for a final passage.
Council File 15625, official ordinance number 162018. An ordinance amending Article 330, Landlord and Rental Section 330.04, residential rental unit registration required.
Mrs. President?
Yes.
Did you read the ordinance? I'm hard to hear. Did you finish it, Rose?
No, I'll start again.
Okay.
Why don't we just wait a minute?
Okay.
Council File 15625, official ordinance number 162018. An ordinance amending Article 330, Landlord and Rental Section 330.04, residential rental unit registration required, to extend the time period for compliant landlords in Section 330.09, fees to reduce rental fees for compliant landlords, and to increase the fees for additional inspections.
Mrs. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this ordinance at the present time.
I'll second.
I just want to table this for, I don't think we've had enough time to integrate the whole plan with the second meeting that we have coming up with BIU, the administration and code enforcement. I think we should wait until that time before we make a decision on what we're going to do with the fee structure.
Madam President, can I speak to the motion to table?
Yes.
Okay. We have a councilman saying that we haven't had enough time to talk about this. I consulted my notes. We got the report about the rental inspection program on March 21st. At that time, I suggested that we set up a subcommittee to talk about the rental inspection program. The administration immediately set up a meeting, and I take notes after every function that I attend or every meeting I go to for city council. So here's my note from Monday, March 26th. Met with the mayor about rental inspection at 4:00 PM. Councilman Kwiatkowski was there, Councilman Mursky was there, and I was there. I wrote, "Good meeting, good solutions proposed by administration, including a longer period for inspection if properties pass two inspections." That was March 26th. So we have known about this since March 21st, when we got the, something that has been described as an audit, but when we had our study session last week, the company that did the report said, "No, it's not actually an audit, it's just a report." Got that on March 21st, met with the administration on March 26th, learned about the proposal to essentially reward good landlords so we can settle this lawsuit. If council did not ask questions after March 26th, and we've had additional communication from the administration about this, this is on council, this is not on the administration, I'm going to vote against tabling, and I'm going to vote to move forward so that we can then, at some point, continue our subcommittee meetings to figure out what else has to be done with the rental inspection program. To say that we haven't had time, I mean, I don't know how many weeks it is from March 26th until now, but it's a good number of weeks where council could have been proactive if they had concerns about this. Thank you.
Mrs. President?
Yes, Ms.?
I appreciate the note-keeping capabilities of my colleague. However, council as a whole did not address this whole situation from the start. What is the hurry? Every time this council, or this city, does something in a hurry, we readdress the problem 10, 15 years later. We run into things. What is the hurry? What is the hurry about one more meeting, which will encompass code enforcement, the administration, and BIU? We're about to make a giant leap of faith, one that even Kirtegaard wouldn't make. Yes, I know that impresses you, but that's okay. You know, even Kirtegaard would make a leap of faith like this, without at least investigating all the facets of it. What is the problem with one more meeting? We can have that meeting in less than a month, have this thing wrapped up. If everybody's comfortable with it, we move forward. But to make announcements in newsletters that an agreement has been reached, and yes, it was, on May 17th, was going to be announced, I didn't, you know, we, yeah, you and I did meet with the mayor, but not council as a whole. So I mean, that's, I just say, for the sake of clarity, I think one more meeting, one hurt. Speed always gets you into trouble.
Madam President, I want to remind people that when the original thing came up to extend the contract with BIU, I asked for more time. I said, "Kathy Schoff and I are newcomers to city council. Could we table that?" But no, we had to approve it that night. So somebody talked about irony. I find that very ironic, that on March 21st, I said, "I'd like a little bit more time because I'd like to know as much as possible about the rental inspection program." And my concerns at that time were shuffled off. It's true- It's true that there were three council people at that meeting, but I think it was incumbent on us to communicate with our council members, and we did. So I know my fellow councilman says he doesn't use email, I think is what he said, or social media, but we certainly all have our council phones, and I've had phone calls about other issues, so we could have had phone calls, we could have talked about this in caucus, and here we are being told that we're rushing something, so.
Madam President?
Yes.
I am against the table as well.
I'm also against tabling it.
Mrs. Arrington?
Yes.
I just had two concerns, and the reason I seconded the motion. The first thing was, the original report said that we were about $300,000 in uncollected revenues that from the program, and we're now down to 230,000, according to the Erie Times News, that's $70,000. When we met during the study session, I asked for, "What's the mechanism going to be to recapture the rest of the money?" And all I was told was aggressive, you know, aggressive going after the people, and we may never recapture it, which I understand you're probably not going to get due to record keeping, that was shoddy in the past, 100% of that money back. However, I was never given that explanation of how are we going to do this? What's the mechanism for collecting this money other than aggressive going after the people? And then the other concern was, if they didn't pass, or they didn't pay, I asked, "How many rental units have been denied their inspection or their permit to inhabit the place?" And everyone said zero. That's a concern, and we didn't address that. Now, I don't want to kick people out of their homes. That's not the intention. But at the same time, we don't, in this ordinance as written, it doesn't have those mechanisms in place that I asked, "How are we going to do this?" And that's my concern, and that's why I voted to second to ta, to table it.
Madam President?
Yes, Ms. President.
I would be in favor of tabling this, just for the fact that even this ordinance, although it would be finally voted on today, would still not go into effect till possibly 2020. We are into that two-year billing cycle, so this won't officially take effect for another year and a half. So with that being said, if we've met with the auditors that gave their recommendations, and we have yet to meet with code enforcement, Andy Zimmerman and BIU, then let's get that study session set, which I believe can be done within a week or two by our next meeting, get some answers to see what procedures are being put into place, what is being done to collect the delinquent landlords, and then go from there. If there, if we got something concrete in place, I'm all for taking care of the landlords who have been compliant. That is not the issue with this. It's, let's get everything on the table on how we're going to move forward before we pass just an ordinance, just to pass it without rushing into it. That's all there is to it. Two weeks is not going to hurt this ordinance. Thank you.
Madam President, can I, I forgot to make one more point. Again, in talking about the timing, I kept, I clipped a file from the Erie Times News from March 25th, 2018, Schember looks to settle rental inspection lawsuit. So again, I just want to emphasize that this was discussed publicly. Here it is. If somebody didn't take it upon themselves to follow up and ask the right questions, again, it's on council, not on the administration. And just to point out that this lawsuit was filed in 2010, and I think it's about time that it gets settled.
Anybody else?
Madam President, I'm all for settling lawsuits, I, but I'm not going to do it at the expense of people who live in substandard housing. And when we have rental inspections, I mean, I've walked through neighborhoods with people in this audience, and I've seen houses with homes in them that passed inspection. Something's not right. And so we have to make sure that what we do is effective. I'm very concerned about passing an ordinance that doesn't have teeth. Somebody else that was a speaker today mentioned the fact that, you know, with these, what's the repercussion if you don't register your house? Or, you know, we're, we're looking at rewarding, which I'm all in favor of, people who are compliant, but on, you know, we have the carrot, we don't have any sticks. And I think that you need both. But beyond that, looking at the ordinance as is, if it's not going to go into effect till 2020 anyway, I don't see, other than the fact that the, what is it, the landlord association, the?
Apartment Association.
Apartment Association, pardon me. The Apartment Association, you know, wants to clear this up, and they're having a dinner tomorrow. Other than that fact, I don't see a sense of urgency on why it must be passed tonight, prematurely from meeting with BIU, code enforcement. Because we do have question, I, at least, I have questions about, why have no houses been denied their rental inspect, their, their passing? If they didn't pay, how did they get an occupancy permit? It doesn't, it, something's not adding up. And that hasn't, nobody's answered that question. And that's a concern. And I'm sure the Apartment Association, I've spoken with people from the Apartment Association, Jason Piero called me, and, you know, they want their people to comply with quality housing for people, you know. So I don't think that putting that in an ordinance and having the administration explain how they're going to, and Code Enforcement Office explain how they're going to implement that is a bad thing. I think that's a good thing, not only for the city to have compliance, but also for the people who live in these apartments, so that they have quality apartments to live in, quality housing.
Mrs. President?
Yes.
This will be my last comment. I hear from so many people that played the game properly, and they ask me, where's their relief? Where's the relief for the people that paid for the last 11 years and played the game right? They get nothing because they're not a member of the landlord association? They're just common citizens? I mean, what do you tell them? What do we tell them? We have a department that is deficient in handing out billing permits, which I will prove later. We have a department that cited no one, and admitted that, and you want me to take a giant leap of faith tonight and just believe they're going to miraculously make this thing work? I mean, we've been given some preliminary numbers, how much revenue we will take in, but we really don't know, as the auditors pointed out, that 300,000 is a, is a moving figure. That's just what they could target. We haven't been, we don't really know, have had time to analyze the numbers and had it looked at by some, probably an auditing firm or our finance department, in great detail to make sure that when we do this, it's not going to cost us. At the same time, I still go back to those that played the game properly for the last 11 years. They get no relief. When it was brought about the contract, why we hurried? There was a reason for that. The contract expired, and so did the computer contract. There were some of us that wanted to keep it less, but as a compromise, like we do in government, we compromise for the balance of the year. That's why we were in a hurry, because the contract expired. Our controller pointed that out to us. As, contracts haven't always been monitored properly around this building. They didn't do it when I was controller, and they don't do it now sometimes, president administration exempted. So I mean, these are the things that go on, but still, I want some answers from the, from the department that's going to administer this, to assure me that I can vote with confidence that they're going to do what they're supposed to have been done. We wouldn't be here today arguing about this program if they had done what they're supposed to have done for the last 11 years. But if you're comfortable with voting for it, go ahead. Me? I personally think we should wait, take the extra meeting, look at it. I didn't make any promise that we were going to solve this by May 17th, and I certainly, I have, still have questions. Just because I agree initially to something, doesn't mean when I go home and I have time to think about it, that more questions don't arise. But you go ahead and vote your conscience, because I'm voting mine.
Call for the question.
On motion of Mr. Kowalski, seconded by Mr. Murfsky, to table ordinance 162018, allowing time to gather more information. Ms. Allen?
I'm voting no.
Mr. Kowalski?
I do not want it tabled. Correct?
Yes, correct.
Mr. Murfsky? Mrs. Schoff?
I do not want it tabled as well.
Mr. Winarsky? Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Mrs. Arrington?
No.
This motion will fail to adopt four to three. By Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that Council File Ordinance Bill 15625, and now known as Official File Ordinance 162018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen? Mr. Kowalski?
No.
Mr. Murfsky?
No.
Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Winarsky?
No.
Mr. Witherspoon? City council pass Official File Ordinance Number 162018, finally by yeas four, nays Council File 15627, official ordinance number 182018, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $120,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue received from the PADEP Community Conservation Partnerships Grant and providing for the expenditure thereof for the McClellan Park Improvement Project. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15627, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 1828, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen? Mr. Kowalski? Mr. Murfsky? Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Winarsky? Mr. Witherspoon? Mrs. Arrington? City council pass Fish File Ordinance 182018, finally by yeas seven, nays zero. Ordinances, ordinances for first reading. Council File 15628, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 261958, the traffic code of the city of Erie by the installation of a stop sign at Crest Avenue and West 42nd By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, the Council File Ordinance Number 15628, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen? Mr. Kowalski? Mr. Murfsky? Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Winarsky? Mr. Witherspoon? Mrs. Arrington? City council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15628 by yeas seven, nays zero, on first reading. Council File 15629, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $1,660,548 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue, provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of McBride, McBride Viaduct East Avenue Bridge.
Mrs., where? Just for clarification, this is the reimbursement, correct?
I don't have a memo.
Yeah, it's, um. Right. Yeah, so it is. Okay.
It is?
Thank you.
You want me to check for the memo?
Controller said it was.
By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Kowalski, that Council File Ordinance Number 15629, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen? Mr. Kowalski? Mr. Murfsky? Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Winarsky? Mr. Witherspoon? Mrs. Arrington? City council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15629 by yeas seven, nays zero, on first reading. Council File 15630, an ordinance appropriated the sum of $150,000 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from PA Emergency Management Agency for firefighting, training, and rescue equipment. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Kowalski, the Council File Ordinance Number 15630, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen? Mr. Kowalski? Mr. Murfsky? Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Winarsky? Mr. Witherspoon? Mrs. Arrington? City council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 15630 by yeas seven, nays zero, That'll take us into new business.
Mrs. President, I'd like to make a motion to waive the agenda.
Second.
Are there any separations?
I'd like to separate number two under new business.
Moving the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen? Mr. Kowalski? Mr. Murfsky? Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Winarsky? Mr. Witherspoon? By Mr. Kowalski, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, that upon the recommendation of the investment committee for the city of Erie Water Reserve Fund, that city council terminate the relationship with large cap manager Philadelphia Trust and transfer the equity to Clear Bridge Investments.
Mrs. President?
Yes.
I just separated this so I can assure the public that the Water Reserve Fund, which represents the money that council oversees and sets aside every year for capital improvements, has been doing a great job, and I want to thank the mayor for paying attention to it and coming down and meeting with us. And this is just one example of a company that even though it made money, did not live up to the indices of what it was being judged against. Because of that, the other company which is doing better gets the, gets the, the investment money from Philadelphia Trust. This pension funds and the Water Reserve Fund monitor the, the assets very carefully. So if these companies don't perform, we are not afraid to terminate them, and we do. And this, I just want to make sure that the public understands that we take the job very seriously. Thank you.
All right. Roll call. Ms. Allen? Mr. Kowalski? Mr. Murfsky? Mrs. Schoff? Mr. Winarsky? Mr. Witherspoon? Mrs. Arrington? That'll take us to committee reports, Madam President.
Ms. Darwood, gas.
Thank you, Mrs. President. Had a busy week, and that's good. I want to thank the administration for paying attention to Parade Street. It's a little bit of improvement, but it still needs a little work. We have a lot of cars that are still using that right away for business, but I want to, you know, thank you for at least taking a step in the right direction on it. It's an important cog as people come into city, and we need to keep that clean, just like we do any other major artery. We attended a study session on LERTA, and I'm a vast proponent of LERTA, and I think we have to look at it and bring it to the forefront. The investment committee met, and we came, that's where we came to the conclusion to terminate the agreement with Philadelphia Trust, and also to monitor the pension funds. We had the Water Reserve meeting. That fund is doing very well. The aggregate pension board met, and that fund is doing very well also. Parking authority met. I couldn't attend that meeting, but I talked to Ray Massing, and they're still progressing on the update of the parking, and hopefully we'll have a report in the future. Tended the ECOG meeting, the council. Tended the ECOG meeting, the council governance, and our mayor was there also. He's like dynamo. He's going to burn himself out, I think, but it was a pleasure to see him there, and I think it's a good organization. I think the mayor would agree that we need to take more advantage of it and a lot of the programs, and I'm glad he's taken interest. And finally, attended the Scott groundbreaking on a new hotel. I don't think people realize the impact that that hotel's going to have. First of all, it's not government financed. It's built by, just like Tom Kennedy built the cobblestone. Yes, we are helping him, but he is investing some of his own money. And at the end of the day, whatever the time period is, he'll be paying taxes and employing people. And also, if the project comes to fruition, it'll be, I think, a point of destination for a lot of tourists. And I think the message was real clear, for those of us that are there. Bob was there. Liz, I didn't see you there at the time, but I understand you were there. The mayor was there, and I think the message was clear. The message went out, and there was other people there. There was Mr. Hagan, other business people. The message was clear about LERTA, that while it's not the game breaker, it could serve as an impetus to get things moving. And my question is, I keep hearing from people, wow, you know, the Bayfront's so valuable. If it's so valuable, why is the GF property sitting there undeveloped? If it's such a gem, why? Why did it take Nick Scott 20 years, and by his own admittance, to start the project? You know, I heard citizens out here talking about what other communities are doing. The reality is, the other communities are doing what we're doing. They're putting out incentives, tax incentives, even going further in the Commonwealth, which is, we're not a state. We don't, we don't give as much out as some of the states are doing in the South. So LERTA is just one big step in the procedure, but not the only one. It may take some creative thinking, because if it, like I keep saying, if it's so valuable and the waterfront is so great, why isn't anybody developing? You don't see any private business people coming in, because the fact is, they're all looking for a little help. They're all looking to make that a little bit more feasible. And with that, I'm going to end with that thing, but I'd also like to make one comment. I, more than anyone, well, I'm not putting myself above anybody. As a veteran, I supported this constitution for many years, and it really hurts me when people take advantage and they misuse a government meeting. I mean, look, we all have the right to talk, but we all, this is also America, and everybody is allowed their day in court, or their day, you know, whatever. This council, we come here, we listen to you, and I would say once again, please give us the same courtesy, and don't boo and don't shout down people, because the true test of a democracy is putting up with that which you find very unattractive or you find unappealing, listening to the other guy's point of view. But that goes a two-way street. So please respect council in the chambers, because this is a business meeting. And with that, Madam President, thank you.
Kathy?
Yesterday, I was, I attended the, at Traditions and saw Mayor Schember there for an art gallery evening with music, and it was a lovely evening of many people who wanted to show off their talents in the art world. On Sunday, there was a unity celebration at Bourbon Barrel. It started at 3:00 and ran to about 9:00, and it was very well-attended refugees and minorities of all cultures. It was a cultural unity celebration, and it was absolutely wonderful. There was drum circle and One World Tribe and many different songs, music, fashion show, and it was a great community spirit, and it was for the multicultural center on East 10th Street. So all the money raised went to that event. There is an art gallery evening on this Friday, which is a lot of fun, and I encourage people who'd like to do that up and down State Street and throughout our city, the gallery, many art galleries have their doors open in the evening until about 9:00 or 10:00, and that is also a great evening, doesn't cost a lot of money. There was a police memorial service today. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend due to my job, but my father, who was a police officer, I was there in spirit, because it's one of those things where you really don't know what a family of a police officer is going through unless you walked a mile in their shoes. When you don't hear from them, thankfully, there's cell phones and that now, but back in the day when I was growing up, if my father was five minutes late from work, we automatically started wondering what was going on. Downing Golf Course is not taking tee times at this time. They're in a six-week trial period where golf is opening, and you don't have to make tee times. They had a slow start to their season because of the weather, and hopefully the weather will pick up, and more people will be out on the golf course. There is a noise pollution concern already when the weather starts getting nice, and I notice a lot of cars shaking and bouncing due to the music being so high. And that's all well and good for the person, but for those people who have hearing concerns or sensory concerns, that can be an issue. I had written a letter to the editor a while back stating that I was for the McBride Viaduct, and I am still for it. I tried to bring people to the table, and we had a vote on that in February, and it was, you know, not to be. My heart is still with all the people who come up and talk, and, you know, that's your amendment right to do that, so I tried what I could do, and it didn't work, so I have to get over it and move on. I am for CBAs, not necessarily attaching them to any LERTA, but definitely hire local and hired, hire people who are trained to do the work. That's all.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Just want to welcome Mr. Lynn Shantz. He's the new executive director of the EMTA. Have yet to meet him personally, but after he gets settled here in Erie a little bit, we'll get him to a caucus meeting with council and have him meet everybody here on council, and then still move forward in getting the tour of the facility on 14th Street. I know we did talk a little bit about our rental inspections. I'll leave that alone right now, but we did have another study session regarding the LERTA. Definitely, definitely in agreement with a citywide LERTA, still not sold on the Bay front area, contrary with CAS, but we have set up a little subcommittee that we are going to meet on Monday. I believe Liz is in that, myself. I don't know if there's... All right, great. And we'll meet and discuss, because there's different options with this LERTA naturally, and one thing people have to realize, too, this LERTA is part of three taxing bodies, you know? I don't know if one can go in being the city, and the school district doesn't want a part of it, or the county goes in and the city goes in, and the school district does not want to be a part of it. I know our solicitor is going to check in to see if any part of the taxing bodies can be in this LERTA, and I'll let him explain that with his... Sure, if you've got a minute.
Any number of taxing bodies can go in, so we have three, the school district, the county, and the city. Any one of them, or two, or all three, could enact it. I think what the consensus has been from the county, the school district, and the city, is that if you like LERTA and you believe it's a good thing, it would be much better if all three are in it together. It becomes a more effective tool. If two or one are, create a LERTA ordinance, it just waters it down, it makes it less effective. That doesn't mean it's not good, if you believe it's good, but it's less effective than all three. So the idea has been to have all three taxing bodies have meetings, you have a meeting, and also the solicitors have meetings to try to make sure we accomplish whatever the will is of our clients.
Great. Thanks for that explanation. Anyway, like I said, we will have a subcommittee meeting, and we'll still examine on what we feel is the best thing for the city of Erie and working with our partners, Erie School District and the county. One other item I just got this afternoon, I don't know if some of our other council people did or not, there is, they've been informed by friends at Pennalec that there is an active scam going on in the area. Pennalec customers are being told they need to pay a certain amount of money, or their electric service will be shut off. So grant you, this is a scam. If you get that phone call, call the police department, and, but be, be aware that that is going on out there right now. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me. The Erie Housing Authority is doing quite well, once again, under the direction of Mr. Mike Fraley. Their next meeting is Monday. They will be meeting at the Eagle's Nest at 1140 Pennsylvania Avenue, and their meeting as well is open to the public. The meeting is at 1:30. Those of us who drive understand and see that our streets, due to the tough winter we had, is in pretty bad shape. In my conversation with Public Works Director, Mr. Moverhill, the plan has been laid out, and they have some plans to cover the main thoroughfares first, and then simply, just like the side streets, just like snow removal. So, you know, feel free to call in and report the potholes and the damaged streets. We like to hear that. But again, drive very, very safely. I noticed an almost accident of a person trying to dodge a pothole, but going over the double yellow line and almost hit the oncoming traffic. So be very careful about that. What you've seen tonight is a diverse council, and it was good, at least for me, that we don't agree. And many people think that we are a rubber-stamp council. We are not that, and you had the opportunity to witness that today. And that's very important. We have these dialogues. We don't agree, but I guarantee you, when we leave this dais, we're all talking, and we'll keep moving on. And that's our job. If we satisfy one group, then there's three others that disagree. You satisfy this side, there's 20 over here that disagree. So we know we aren't going to satisfy everyone. We try to collectively bring our thoughts together, and we vote accordingly. And once we pass something on the final vote, then it becomes law, then we have to go and make it happen. And in some cases, we have to amend certain things. That's why the amendment is in there. So you've seen a diverse council that disagree, and sometimes we get loud, not out here, but we get loud, and we bang the table. But when we leave this building, we are speaking to one another. Thank you, Madam President.
I went to the sewer authority meeting yesterday, and there will be a special meeting of the sewer authority on May 22nd. It's a long one, from 10:00 AM to, I think, 2:00 PM. The consulting engineer will be there to present the capital improvement plan. I also found out at the authority meeting yesterday that the Pennsylvania Municipal Authority Association is going to meet in Erie September 8th through 12th. That's going to bring people into Erie, you know, to see what we have here. I also, I said I always like to find good news, because a lot of times we hear a lot of negative things, and I saw that somebody tweeted today a story from Keystone Edge, "This Is Our Erie." It includes an embedded video, I think it's the one that Epic Web Studios did. The story is, "This Is Our Erie," Keystone Edge, by Elise Vider, V-I-D-E-R. It just makes you want to stand up and cheer, because it has so many good things about what is happening in Erie. And I think that one of those good things was obviously here, you know, the recognition for the young man who's a state wrestling champ, but also seeing all those kids from Collegiate Academy and hearing about their project that they did in conjunction with the UN on decent economic solutions for all. So I flagged Erin, who, you'll remember, she was also the young woman who led the call to meet with Congressman Mike Kelly about gun issues. So we have some really good stuff going on with, with young leadership, and I'd like to know more about what their international project was on economic solutions for all, because I think we are ready to talk about equitable development. I like to, I like it when it's phrased that way, equitable development. And a lot of what I've read in recent months about equitable development talks about entrepreneurship and making sure that minorities and people of color have access to those tools to become entrepreneurs. I happened to meet a guy today, a young man, at the bookstore who was waiting for a book to come in that he had ordered called Crushing It: How Great Entrepreneurs Build Their Business and How, and Influence, and How You Can Too, and he's developing some kind of competitive gaming thing. So I gave him a contact person at Mercyhurst University, a guy in the intelligence program who I know is involved in actually selling his own games. So there's a lot of cool stuff going on in Erie, especially tech-wise. So I think we need to keep cheering about Erie and realizing that we do have problems, but we have the tools to solve those problems.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few things to report. On the agenda today, we received a grant from the PA Department of Environmental Protection and for McClellan Park Improvements. That was something I've been involved with since its inception with the McClellan Park Neighborhood Watch, along with former councilman Dave Brennan. And throughout that process, which has been probably going on five years now, we developed a master plan for that park, and the first thing that was put in was a dog park funded solely through grants from the community foundation and the state. And then now we are working on the playground and amenities for families with this $120,000, putting in a playground for the people of the east side in the McClellan Park area. And also, from economic development, we put in a application for a redevelopment assistance capital program for downtown streetscape revitalization. And these RCAP funds are distributed to cities, well, now they're called RACP. They changed the name Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program now, to cities. And in a discussion with somebody on Facebook, with some of the projects that were, have been awarded money by the governor through this app competitive grant process, somebody got upset, and I tried to explain that if we don't take the money for Erie, it doesn't just go back into the pot and sit there. Another city takes it. Allentown will get it. Pittsburgh will get it. Philadelphia, Redding, Scranton. And these are your tax dollars that you are paying to the state, which are then coming back for economic development. So I want to thank the administration, because they've been aggressive under Chris Groner in applying for... in applying for these state funds with quality projects, and they've been, it's a competitive process, and we've been receiving more of our state money back into the area. Also with economic development on the agenda, we, the enterprise loan fund, we are loaning $54,000 to Prescott Isle Tent and Table to relocate into the City of Erie. They're moving into Erie's Little Italy, taking a vacant building that's currently unoccupied and bringing jobs into the community and helping to revitalize an area of the city, the former industrial area of Little Italy coming in. And it's not a grant, it's a loan, so they will be paying it back, which then we use that money to loan out to other businesses in the community. Today, I also attended the Fallen Police Memorial Ceremony along with the mayor, and I was honored to speak there today. As Mrs. Schaff said, when you have family in law enforcement, the whole family is affected with the stresses of the job, not knowing if your loved one will come home at night or after their shift. And so we give a lot of credit, and we've honored in a special way those who have passed in the line of duty. Also with economic development, I heard one of the speakers speak about Amazon, and I just wanted people to know that the City of Erie, well, actually, all of Erie County, we signed on with the Pittsburgh application for Amazon. And while we didn't meet the qualifications for the airport, you needed direct flights to Seattle, and we didn't have those, but Pittsburgh, they had the qualification, so we did sign on to that, it's reported in the Erie Times News. Philadelphia, in fact, Philadelphia and Pittsburgh both made the shortlist for that Amazon relocation, and so sometimes, you know, I don't want to say misinformation, but sometimes don't people come up and they say something, but they don't have all of the facts, and the truth of the matter is, we are helping Pittsburgh with their application, knowing that we, if they get it with all of those jobs, there's an opportunity for spinoff work in this community. We aren't big enough for some of these projects and some of these relocations, but if we can assist this whole region, it's better for all of us. So I just wanted to make that clear. We did sign on with the Pittsburgh application, a letter of support, and that's in the works, and they did make the shortlist. Convention Center Authority meets tomorrow at 3:00 p.m. As soon as I get out of work, I will be there. And just a request to the administration, I would ask, when you have events and stuff, I was talking to our staff in the clerk's office, that we send, now that we have the communications director and the press, the social media director, if we would send that information also to the clerk or the deputy clerk, so that they can distribute it to council. There was a couple of things, and it's probably just getting acclimated to the position that were missed, so just if we could get that to the clerk's office, if we can put that in their instructions to CC the city clerk, because oftentimes, people either call one or two places in City Hall, they call the mayor's office, or they call the clerk's office, so we want to make sure both offices have the same information, so that people are getting accurate information. And finally, I want to wish everybody a happy Memorial Day and a safe Memorial Day. Thank you.
I have no report, Teresa.
I have no report.
Mayor.
With the lateness of the hour, I'll be brief, but basically, one thing I want to talk about, I do appreciate the council passing that item on the rental inspection program, and it does not prevent, it's a minor change, really, that's all that is, and this is based on months of working with the apartment association leaders, you know, Jason Perrow, Joel Miller, John Baldwin, building a relationship with them, and this minor change, which I think you all agree, it's going to help landlords that are doing a good job and make it better for them, it will allow the landlord association and the apartment association, I believe, tomorrow at their meeting, to drop the lawsuit that's been in process against the city for, since 2010. It does not prevent further research, and I would